I don't know why one of those lights, highlights the air conditioner.
You have the blinds over there?
Huh?
We could turn that.
Yeah, they all, they all.
No, I think I had, I think I did get it.
I just flicked its lights and saw.
They were working on my way here.
One of those is, somebody has moved it.
My problem is I delete it.
It doesn't shine on there.
Oh, so.
Did they really? They doubled it?
How to support.
I agree.
Women and.
Susan Matson, I swear I saw that. From yesterday?
Are we ready, Lisa? Oh, we're good, okay. All right, let's begin. Welcome, everybody, to our South Weaver City Council meeting of May 11th, 2021. It is 6:01 PM and all council members are in attendance. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will give that and then we'll have a prayer by Councilman Halverson. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, as we come before this evening, we're grateful for the opportunity we have together as members of our community and citizens of South Weaver. And we're especially thankful for the country which we live in and the freedoms which we have. And we're especially grateful for those military and emergency and medical staff that help us provide those freedoms and the chance to enjoy life here. Father, we're thankful that we have the opportunity to discuss items for the city. Then we ask for thy Spirit to be with us that we might make the best decisions for all of those members of our community. Again, we thank thee for all that we have and we say it in the name of the Lord's Christ and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Halverson. Our next item is public comment. Please state your name and address. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Please address entire council and know that we won't be responding during public comment. We're now open for public comment. Okay, hearing none, we will move to our next item, which is the approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the April 13th, 2021 minutes and the polling location and voting centers designated. So in accordance with 20A-5-403, the Family Activity Center has been designated a polling place for the 2021 municipal primary and general elections for South Weaver City and is established as a common polling place for all voting precincts within the city in accordance with 20A-5-303. Also, and in accordance with 20A-3A-703, various other locations are designated as election day voting centers, so long as the cities in which these buildings are located are required to hold an election. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further comment? And we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. The next item is Resolution 21-23, First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Riverside RV Park. On March 9th, 2021, Riverside developer McKay Winkle requested two amendments to the development agreement recorded November 5th, 2020. The council agreed to allow the sound wall instead of the original fence, but did not approve the landscaping. McKay returned on April 13th, 2021 with an updated plan and the council tabled the item until all suggestions can be clearly identified and compared with the original. McKay has submitted the requested summary and is additionally requesting two supplemental requests. Number one, to change landscaping along I-84, and number two, the reduction in number of shrubs to reduce water usage. Are there comments or questions on this agreement?
Are we going to have McKay present or go through it or we just kind of go based off of the original request? It might, because there were two options, there's the.
Might be helpful to explain it, McKay.
Yeah, let's go through the, through it.
I don't think that's on. Is there a switch on there?
There we go. Check, check.
There you go.
That works.
Hello, city. McKay Winkle here, developer Riverside RV Park. Thanks for having us back. And I've got, took into account the comment a couple of times and just kind of want to walk you through the revised plan that we put together. So we, the, the plan that is submitted is very similar to the current approved plan. And I think based on the comments we've got back, that should be, to be presumptuous, but I'm hoping that's acceptable. In addition to that, we, I left a couple hot button items that we'll accept kind of whatever the city would like to do on those two spot or those two categories, but I thought I'd just leave it up to you guys to decide on those items. But first, the change on the existing plan, we moved the dog park to the very end of the site. Here you can see, kind of it used to be, we shortened a few spaces originally and had the dog park there in a kind of a common area. Instead, we punched those spaces through so that they can be pull-through spaces and then moved the dog park to kind of that tail area past the tent sites that you see there. So that was a change I think was generally supported there. I think it's better here because it's, there'll be, you know, dogs and noise, smells, et cetera. Be better to have them kind of out of the public area. We also proposed that in the tent side area, we use some of our wood chips there as opposed to the gray gravel that we had originally been approved for. It makes use of the excess chips we have there as well as I think it'll just, people appreciate sleeping on that better. The other change to the submitted plan is instead of Kentucky bluegrass, we talked to a company that has lots of different kinds of grasses and said this is the most drought tolerant, best looking grass that we were going for. It doesn't clump, keeps a nice carpeted look, it's a nice green color and uses less water. Another change we made was instead of kind of the native grasses around the cabins, which sometimes doesn't look that great. I thought it would be better just to put that grass around those cabins in the middle of the site. We're adding a little bit more grass or deeper green color to the kind of the finished landscape there. It'll be a little more, more higher water usage there, but I feel like it'd be worth it.
McKay, that's just around number 64, 5, 6, and 7, right? Was the change on that one?
Yeah, it's just kind of that, that light green in the center row. It's just, just that area.
Okay, thank you.
For that change. And then I think this is mostly an oversight for us, but we noticed that there was gray gravel kind of on the riverside spaces and I just wanted to be able to use kind of a different kind of color there on that side. That'd be more consistent with the finishes around the other sites. So the submitted plan reflects all those changes. And I don't think there are any hot buttons there, but please correct me if I'm wrong. Kind of the summary of square footages and plants, trees, et cetera, are here. Not, you know, a ton of change really. You know, remove the Kentucky bluegrass, but we put the fine fescue and removed, I think, some of the native grass. Probably the biggest changes there. So I did my best to estimate water usage. So based on, just, I mean, everybody has a different opinion. It's kind of hard for a layperson like myself to estimate this. You guys may know better. But what I found online from sources seemed to say that Kentucky bluegrass takes 25 inches of irrigation and the fine fescue is 19 inches. And so my math, while adding square footage of grass, we added 10,000 square feet of this type of grass. We'll still save 36,000 gallons a year on watering by, you know, adding a lot more grass and changing the seed. So, so that's kind of the, the basic plan submitted. And then I wanted to ask council and they can ultimately decide, you know, however you want to read the resolution or finalize it, if the, the following two changes are acceptable or would be, would be allowed. We talked about this one a bunch last time, but the spaces along I-84, I was talking to the landscape architect. He actually had intended this to be gravelled but left in grass by accident. And he said it doesn't make sense to have the, those taller shrubs in grass right there. Nevertheless, it was kind of left in and submitted that way. So what we would propose is, you can see kind of the light green native grasses in the back. That's still the same, but the dark green area where there was grass between the spaces. What we'd propose is, in those sites, we have kind of some taller shrubs. A lot of these kind of taller grasses, carrel foresters, they're supposed to grow taller and give more of a barrier. And what I think looks better is having gravel around those. It kind of accentuates kind of the plants, gives kind of a clean, modern look. And I truly think, I truly think aesthetics with a gravel between those spaces would look better. And it's a lot less water usage, another kind of shot. These are just kind of stock photos off Google Photos of these plants that are in our plan. But you can see kind of the gravel, the tall grasses, and that's kind of what would be what we propose around the, just those sites along I-84 there. So yeah, so that's that one. And then the other request is, as opposed to going through and submitting a plan with less shrubs, we just, if, if there is any appetite for the city to let us plant fewer shrubs, we would just kind of evenly space them, kind of that reduction throughout the site. So I do think for a typical RV park, there's going to be an excess amount of, or not an excess, but ample amount of plants in the approved plan already. There's 20, a bunch of different sites. They have a lot of plants around them. I would say a typical site had about 26 plants, so there's plenty of shrubs there. And I still think it would look nice. Estimates of if we did just a flat 15%, 25% or 35% removal or reduction in the number of shrubs, just to be kind of spread out, would result in additional water savings that, you know, just are based on kind of those estimates there in the bottom. And so that's another option for the city if, if they feel comfortable with any of those reductions. I kind of put it on you guys to say no reduction or any of those categories would, we'd be great with. But I know it's, water's a hot item right now. I think there's a general movement to reduce, especially us using culinary water. We're still in efforts to get secondary. But even if we get secondary, I think it's still good practice to not have to use so much water to water plants. But anyway, whatever, whatever you guys think we'll, we'll be good with on those two, but wanted to at least move on and if, have you guys happy with whatever the outcome is? So happy to answer any questions, whatever you guys want to talk about.
Okay, any questions for McKay?
So McKay, just on the second one of reducing the plants, the irrigation and/or watering system wouldn't change? You would just plant less?
Right, yeah. We'd still have to do the same. Well, we'd probably have to do maybe bigger hoses for the drip system on these to accommodate the more water. I, I don't know, honestly. We'd have to go get our irrigation plan updated, but yeah, they, it's still, we wouldn't rob one area and just to be desolate. It would just kind of thinly be spread and hopefully they all, all look good, but.
And then you mentioned just an update on the secondary water. It's not, you haven't gotten a source yet, but you're still working on that?
We're still working on it and I, I, I'm hopeful, actually. I think it's, it may work out. It's looking positive. It's, it's still not finalized or there's some things we have to apply for with the state to move some water shares and get some other stream alteration permits to do it. But that's the course we're, we're on. Actually, yeah. It's not, we're not there yet, but I, I do think we can get there.
I do, I do think it will happen, but it's going to take a little time.
Other questions? Or comments on how you feel about the reduction of water, plants?
Well, I'll make a comment first about the first four. I, I agree with those changes that we talked about with the dog park change and the fescue and what else did we have?
The gravel.
The gravel, yeah. I, I'm okay with the original four that you have.
Okay.
I'm fine with the first one with the change to remove the grass and put in the gravel around the tall grass. That to me looks a lot better as well. I've seen places like that, so that makes sense. As far as reducing the number of shrubs, I understand, you know, the need and desire to do that and, and I'm okay with the reduction as long as we still have the irrigation that would support the total number. If for some reason we decide for privacy or space or whatever that we want to put, you know, that amount back in. As far as how much, I could easily, you know, see a 15% reduction, 25%, just one-fourth. You're still going to have three-fourths of them there. I think probably okay at that point as well.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to comment?
I mean, I'm also okay with the first four. I was going back and forth on what I would think about the plant reduction, but as I sat here, I, I think I'd be okay with the 15% reduction in plants.
How do you feel about the, the gravel on the I-84 spaces?
Oh, I think it, I don't know what else you would do there, really, there and mow it. So I don't know if anybody, I said this earlier, but where we walked around during the conference, that's what all of that, all those little paths between the sidewalks were is that tall grass with gravel. I don't know how else you'd maintain anything else between there. Unless it was bark or something, but gravel seems to be a little.
Bark's a little messy, we decided, and I think it'd just look cleaner with the gravel.
For sure. Okay, so, okay, so 15 is what you recommend?
I think it's a significant savings in water, I think, but you're still having shrubs. I, I don't know if anybody saw the park as you came into St. George when you were there. They had zero plants and I definitely don't want to see that. But I think you're still going to have a lot of plants on each space that way.
Okay.
I guess I'll put my mic on. Can I go? I'll support the first four base changes that you've proposed. I agree with the other two councilmen's. The supplemental change with I-84 and the gravel, that makes sense to me as well. I'm of a different opinion when it comes to the supplemental two and reducing the plants. And it's not so much as putting upon us to be, you know, water, to save water. Yeah, it puts us in an unfair position. You presented, sold to this council who took a lot of heat in approving this, a certain landscaping plan. And I want to hold you to that landscaping plan and let you figure out the different watering combinations. So I'm of no reduction. I'll go with the base recommendations, which reduced it 23 plants.
Good.
Thank you, Councilman Windsor. Councilman Petty, do you comment?
I would agree with the first four changes as well and the grass on the I-84 side. On the plant reduction summary, I feel like we should do like 17 and seven-quarters percent. No, 15%, I, I feel like, I, I feel like I could support 15%. I think that's okay. I, I agree with Wayne. We did take a lot of heat over this site plan, but I feel like 15 would be, would be appropriate. That would be okay with me.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Albert's had a lot to say last time, so.
I just saving the best for last. No, I'm just kidding. First off, thank you for this information. This is, this was much more helpful than pulling out the previous packet and trying to go back and forth. I appreciate the time that you gave on this. And I concur with the other council members of the original proposal of the, the fine fescue and the I-84, the gravel. I agree that makes sense as well as the, the bark and stuff in that area. Just out of curiosity, is there a gate on that dog park? Is that what that little line was?
It'll be, I don't, there will be a fence there. And, and yeah, it'll have a closed gate, so.
Gotcha.
To get their dogs off leash in that area.
That's nice. That's, that's a nice asset that gives to your customers. Oh, the plants. I am conflicted on this because I, and I'm, I'm in the same place I was last month. And I understand that we want to save water and, and that is an important thing. But I just, it, I just still have a hard time with changing it when nothing else has changed. It wasn't like, oh crap, I only have culinary and, and things. I mean, I know we're in a state of emergency with the drought, but that's also not something terribly new to Utah, so. I'm, I'm not in favor of any further reduction other than the four proposed. But I appreciate you presenting this in this way. It's very helpful.
I know, I, I think the, the, we were most hopeful about the, the gravel on 84. I think that's going to look better and so we feel good about that. It would be great to save some water with fewer shrubs, but honestly, I want you guys to be happy with it. So I, I think it'll still look nice even with the small reduction. You may not even notice them, notice the reduction. I think it'll still look great.
I'm, I'm not a, not a huge botanist, but typically I found with my own landscaping and, and things, the bigger those shrubs get, the less water they're eventually need as well as they get their roots deeper, especially being that close to the river. You may find that you're going to be saving more water than you're, than you're calculating here. And I agree with you. It is really hard to figure out how much water each plant needs. It's, it varies a lot, but I do feel where you are so close to the river, there's groundwater that those plants will find, especially those shrubs, so.
All right.
Personal clarification?
Yes.
The dog park is a private dog park, so our rules don't govern the use of that dog park. Is that correct?
That is correct. They will establish their own rules for that dog park.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? So it seems that three of the council are willing to make a reduction, if that's still the case. Three and, and two don't believe that we should consider a reduction. So if, if that is still the opinion of this council, it seems to me that a 15% reduction would be what we allow. Okay.
So McKay, though, are you okay with no reduction? I mean, that's obviously what you said, but you would like something.
I think we've. I I think we've um uh. I I don't want to be pushy or feel like I'm getting out of responsibility, um, or I, and I do greatly appreciate uh having worked with everybody, they've been. Great to work with through a bunch of bumps that we've had to deal with, and so I honestly, I'll be happy with what you guys decide, fifteen would be great, that'd be our preference, but. Yeah, just great for the consideration and patience.
All right, well, thank you, McKay, um, if there are no further questions, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three? And please state what the changes would be. Blair's working on something.
Are you questioning the uh amount of reduction, Blair?
Yeah, I'm just trying to decide whether I put that in the motion or not. Unless you have it in your head, go for it.
Go, no, you can do it, that's fine, I'll allow you, I just, the only reason I would consider the reduction too is because of the emergency with water, that's it.
Right, that's my feeling as well. That's why I would like to have the sprinkling system allowed to go back up to a higher quantity, you know, if if needed or.
Things change.
Change.
I think they'll base that on area in the area, I think of the sprinkling system, so they should be, it should be capable if you're having to add plants to get rid of visuals.
Yeah, I would think you just pop in another drip drip line and um shouldn't be tough, I wouldn't, I mean, spacing, I think at that point spacing would be the issue. Cause then they've kind of grown and things may be a little upsided, but um. You know, by then I think you'd have size in the current plants and it's probably the equivalent of adding plants to it, I don't, I don't know. If you give it a few years, I think they'd uh flower and be nice and big and more bushy and um maybe that'd be, that would suffice, I don't know.
So Mayor, I guess I have one more question, and maybe this goes to um city staff in code enforcement or whatever, I mean, we approve a certain number of plant shrubs. They start dying off. What is the future hold, if half of them die out, are they held to this number for the rest of forever, or? What what happens?
That's a fantastic question. Uh, the. The development agreement, as this is part of, um. My understanding is that they are agreeing to provide the plants for this landscape plan, the landscape plan. And uh that that would be the expectation moving forward. Code enforcement would would.
Wouldn't necessarily walk in and count it as a little bush, but.
That's a, that will be monitored, right, we we wouldn't just walk away from that, we would monitor that, there there would be an expectation that they would provide the plants according to the plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, does anyone want to take a stab?
Sure, I'll take a stab. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty-two-three uh for the Riverside RV Dart, or Riverside, where am I at?
Twenty-one, twenty-three.
Twenty-one, twenty-three, with the following changes, uh, change in the type of grass, uh, the relocation of the dog park. Add the the couple of drive-through stalls where the dog park was, uh, change the gravel, change to a combination of gravel with the tall grass along I eighty-four. And with the fifteen percent reduction in the total plants for the development to conserve water.
Okay, we have um.
Did I miss anything?
Uh, no, um, I'd intend it to be just whatever was submitted. Uh, with 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 those one, the proposed plan, so what what we, what drawing we submitted was those four changes, and so I was thinking if you approved the drawing as approved. Plus request number one or request number two might.
And I believe it.
Request number two is the tent sites having the wood chips instead of gravel around it.
Okay.
Add the wood chips in the tent sites, but as proposed.
Yeah, that's as drawn, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further comment?
Yeah, the resolution as written in our packet, uh, one of the whereas's would have to be updated to match that motion. It needs to be clarified as well as the exhibit one, some of the motion where it has to be uh. Clarified in those definitions as well under section one amendment to match the motion. Before it gets signed.
We would update that language to match the motion of the council.
Okay. Any further comments? And we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
I vote no.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Okay, we have three ayes and two noes, uh, motion carries. Uh, thank you, McKay, McKay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is resolution twenty-one dash twenty-four Davis County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan. Davis County is in the process of updating their pre-disaster mitigation plan, having obtained a grant from FEMA. Davis County needs a formal statement of support and agreement to participate from the stakeholder agencies, including South Weaver City. This item was tabled on April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one to allow time to get some answers regarding any possible conflicts between the county. Plan and the city plan, staff has since been able to determine that city's support of the county plan will not interfere with the city's grant application. Are there comments or questions on this resolution? And do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash twenty-four?
I I have one question, this is identical to what was presented for us, just the clarification that it doesn't affect the city, correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Then, Mayor, I make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-one dash twenty-four Davis County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comments? We'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. All right, next item is resolution twenty-one dash twenty-six, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two tentative budget. And to set a public hearing for May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, state law mandates that cities prepare and file a tentative budget. Council meeting in May, committees and staff have given input to the budget officer as he is prepared this tentative tentative budget. Council had an opportunity to discuss the budget on April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and it is now being submitted. Are there comments or questions on the tentative budget?
Would you like an explanation of changes from our last meeting to this meeting?
Please, yes.
Okay. Mayor and council, there have been a few changes, Lisa has the PowerPoint with those changes, um, as you've reviewed it, you may have seen those, so go to the next slide, Lisa, if you would. Um, starting out at the beginning, um, we've received, first I want to say thank you to those who have given me typos. And a few other little corrections that were in since the budget, as it was presented on the twenty-seventh, and those who have submitted those typos, all those changes have been made. Uh, Quinn submitted some, and I sent that out to you, and all the things that Quinn addressed have um have been. Updated into the pa, wasn't in your packet, it but has been updated with the version, it'll go out uh once it's approved. First of all, in the beginning was a budget summary, and it has some county data, it's just some demographics, we have not received the the twenty-twenty-one. Data from the county, so I just put back in and made sure that the twenty-twenty data was still in there before the final budget gets approved, if. We do get those things where it just shows a little bit about how much property and how that we have in the city and so forth, that'll be updated at that time. There is a section on fund summaries, it just shows the total of each of the funds, uh, that has been updated with some additional changes that have been made. We also have, in the budget as it sits in the tentative, is what is proposed, is a certified tax rate. We have not received that information and won't probably receive that till the first of June, so this is taking last year's tax rate and putting in the county's. Paramedic tax rate, and so that's what's showing in there. Uh, before we get to the final one, we have to get that information from the county, so in the tentative, that's what we have in there. For your information, it's the best guess of what it will be, once the county gives it to us, and we put, and we combine those two. On the next slide. Um, we have some expenditure changes, and those are, we realized that the cherry farm ball field will not be completed before. Uh, July first, so that's been rebudgeted, and that's a change, also the Canyon Meadows West. Uh, changes and and improvements will not be completed before July first, and so we have a million dollars being rebudgeted there. Uh, in the tough, the city project list for twenty-twenty-two has been added to the document, so that that is all listed in there. The East Bench Transmission Line in the Water Department um will not be probably even started. Well, there's been a few engineering things done on it, but that has been rebudgeted from the current year over to the following year. And so that million-dollar project has been rebudgeted. Also, there was a change under capital projects, originally we had the paving of the Cedar Cove Trail. And that has been removed, the engineer has said, after they did an analysis of all the different trails in the city. They went out and looked at those and said, we need to wait on that one, that's gonna take a complete rebuild and replacement, and so the proper thing to do at this time. Would be to put a seal coat on the Cottonwood Cove Trail and a seal coat on the Old Maple Farms. Freedom Landing Trail. And you have the cost on that, also, uh, an appendix B has been updated to include. The map for the the twenty-twenty-two street projects. Uh, at the time, we had, two weeks ago when we had the hearing, we had the discussion, I didn't have that map yet. I had last year's map, so the current map is now in there for the tentative budget. And that's the, all those changes that I've talked about show up more than one, some of them show up more than one place, and they've been incorporated in the individual. Department and fund budgets, and I'm, we tonight uh is uh is to adopt the budget, the tentative budget. And to set the hearing, when we, in two weeks, when we have a public hearing, we will make a major presentation. Uh, similar to what we did two weeks ago, but we'll make the major presentation to the public during the public hearing. Tonight, we just present the budget to you and wanted you to be aware of the changes that have been made since the last time we discussed this, and if you have any additional questions on this. Now, I'd be happy to answer anything that you want to ask.
Okay, any questions?
I just have a quick one, on the civic building, I've been asked this a couple of times, why is it that we are removing it, and what is, what is, what's the plan for after it's been removed?
The council made a decision, I want to say a year, year and a half ago, something like that, to remove that building, um, it's becoming very expensive to maintain. There goes my mic, um, it's becoming very expensive to maintain as an old structure, right now it is simply used as a storage building. And uh, the plan is to remove that, put a storage structure in the back of the property behind the fire station, and then that will become a drive aisle. For the trucks to be able to access the fire station from the back. Um, it is best practice for for fire vehicles apparatus to never back up, essentially, and we're unable to do that right now, and we'll be able to do that after the. The building is removed and the drive aisle is is put in place.
So does this cost include paving that driveway to the back?
Yes.
Okay, is that expected to change with. Current prices and things, or did you guys give a, did you guys give a lot of room there for that to go up? Eighty-five hundred percent?
That was estimated recently, that's not an old number, but.
Okay.
Those numbers are changing fast, so I think once we actually go out to bid, then we want to do that sooner rather than later, before it gets. Too high for, yeah, concrete costs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, um, and it's for the Parks Department. Okay, um, page one eleven of the packet or page fifty, we have twelve maintenance, which we added as a new line item. Um, but it's not showing a budget, and I thought we'd put allocated ten thousand so we could do maintenance, um, I I appreciate the clarification you put in here for. The chip and sale of the other trails, um, but when we talked about Cedar Cove specifically about. Uh, pursuing a grant and we needed to have money budgeted to match for that, is that still something that we were able to allocate that ten thousand?
Uh, that's not currently, I think when we talked about Cedar Cove, I remember the discussion and when we decided. When the engineer said we were not going to do anything with Cedar Cove in the next year's budget, uh, the only place we put money was in the capital projects, and there is no money specifically on that line item as it currently. We can, um, the final budget will not be approved till June, and if the council feels that we need to modify this tentative bud, I'm not, excuse me, not till June, it actually with the. Uh, truth in taxation, we'll approve our final budget in August, and so between now and August. And after the public hearing, which is in two weeks, changes can be made to this budget, currently there is no money, that ten thousand is not in the budget.
So um, if, would that be something the council right now would decide if that's appropriate, or would that go back to committee to recommend, how would we do that if that's something we decide to pursue?
If the council, if that's a council request, it can be put in the final budget, we did, we'd probably just let the tentative budget as it is now. And that could be a change between the tentative budget and the final budget, if that's something that the council wants to do.
Maybe we'll discuss it Friday in a committee.
Okay, the mayor makes a great suggestion, we have a Parks Committee meeting on Friday, we can discuss this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's important to know that this is the tentative budget, and between now and August, changes can be made on the request of the council.
Thank you, Mac.
Any other questions?
Just a clarification, for public purposes, there's gonna be more than one public hearing on this budget, the one you're talking about for May twenty-fifth is the public hearing. On the tentative budget if adopted tonight, the second is the truth in taxation hearing, which would be later in the summer.
Yes, that's the one, the truth in taxation is the one.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
And there will also be a third one in June, which is for changes to the budget which we currently are in, if we amend the twenty. Uh, twenty, twenty, twenty-one budget, uh, there will be, that will happen in June amendments, because those amendments have to be made before. Uh, the end of June, so, yes, there will be three actually, two for the next year's budget and one on this year's budget, thank you for the clarification, Wayne.
Okay, now, I do have a question, I don't know if it'll be a short question.
Forget it then.
Okay, so, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, you said you, on the, on the budget, you used our current tax rate, certified tax rate for the property taxes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I I guess I just want to bring up a, maybe more of a discussion and see how the council feels, two years ago, we went through a very large property tax increase. And I think all of us don't want to have to do something significant like that again, and we talked about maybe looking forward and doing something more along the lines of maintaining our current tax rate. And and maintaining that year to year, or every other year, or whatever, so the percentage stays the same, the county doesn't reduce our tax rate, I mean, most. I always thought before I was on council that our percentage rate always was the, a certain set percentage, um, I don't think uh, a lot of people understand that it's something that gets adjusted based on a dollar amount. Um, but I think uh, we are having the truth in taxation hearing, um, I think we should, personally, I think we should maintain our tax rate. Uh, at, while we are also adding the paramedic rate, so I would like to hear people's opinion on that. So I would like to hear people's opinion on that. It's, it's in the budget now at that tax rate. I don't think it's an amendment, and if we want it to be another discussion another night, we can do that before August, but I, I, maybe it's not appropriate to just totally discuss that now. I just, we're talking about our budget, and I think it makes a big difference and what we can anticipate. So would anyone like to share their opinion since I threw mine out there first?
Haley told me she wanted to give her opinion next.
She lies. I think that, I think that I am definitely in favor of having more frequent truth and taxations to hold that rate. I'm having a hard time with this year, just because we did receive so much from the state, and we're going to receive more from the state in a way that we probably won't ever receive again. And I know that there are specific uses for that, but I would, if I have to give a quick answer right now, I would be in favor in looking into that in year three, three years from our last truth and taxation. Would be my personal opinion. To start us off.
I apologize, Haley. I didn't give you forewarning, so.
That's all right.
Who goes next now, Angie?
I think Wayne volunteered to go next.
Just a clarification before I answer the question, if I may. Because what I heard you explain, which is in this tentative budget, what I understood are two different things I want to understand again. What staff has put in the tentative budget with regards to truth of taxation is our rate is going to, the percentage is going to reduce down to maintain what our current dollar amount that we're getting, but then it's going to increase that percentage that we're losing from the county to compensate for paramedic service. We're not holding our current rate and adding the sixty-seven thousand dollars on top of it. We're that the rate's going down to maintain the cash value we currently get, and then we're going to adjust it to get the 60,000 on top of it. What I hear Blair suggesting is, let's hold the rate so that the property values that went up from last year to this year would increase our dollar amount, and then add the 60,000 dollars on top of that. Those are the two different things.
Let me, can I explain how that shows up in the budget? In my calculations, and this is just a guessing game, I mean, it's, it's the best estimate that I can come up with. When we put the amount of property tax into the general fund revenue line item, I looked at holding the same amount as we received last year, adding in what is anticipated new growth, and adding in the paramedic, paramedic tax. And that's where the dollar figure was. Now, when I put in, in the narrative, the certified tax rate, I put the proposed tax rate, I took last year's tax rate, added in the paramedic tax rate, and put that in. Because I have no idea what that reduced rate is going to be. So yes, both of those two figures are in the budget. One is the dollar amount we anticipate not holding the tax rate, but reducing it and holding the dollar amount. But in order to put something in for the tax rate, I, I put in last year's plus the paramedic tax rate from last year and got to that. And one of the reasons it's a little bit simpler to explain than take the la, than the other way around.
Thank you. It's a very difficult discussion to have with the public, because I never, not everyone understands, as Blair mentioned before, how the taxes work in regards to the dollar value the city receives, the interest rate and the property values. And if the property values go up, our interest rate goes down to maintain that same dollar value unless you have a truth in taxation hearing. And so going back to the question, just to clarify in my mind, what's being proposed or suggested as discussion is, we hold the rate that was established last year, assuming our property values have gone up, and we all know our property values have gone up over the last year, means the dollar amount's going to go up. My mind is, is that going to be enough? If we hold the rate, is that going to be enough to cover the cost for the county's paramedic service? But then I heard again, well, let's put the 60,000 dollars on top of that, so we're going to have additional revenues if we go with the recommendation than we currently are estimating to bring in. My mind is, well, what's the plan for those revenues? Do we have an immediate need for those right now? Given the comments I heard from Haley that we've already received a lot of revenues, one-time revenues from the state. Are we missing an opportunity because of the increase in the property values? Is there a risk of the property values going opposite direction the next year, and we're going to be caught a little upside down? To answer your question, I think I'm, I'm a little leery to do all that full thing this year. I do agree, we need to adjust our rate every two to three years, but I think in this regard, with what's happened the second year, I think we wait one more year. I think we hold a truth in taxation hearing in order to cover the 60,000 plus a differential from the county paramedic services, and then look beyond that, you know, to what the, the rate needs to be.
I will just add to the conversation that by mid-June, we will know what either way, what those will produce in property tax. Towards the latter part of June, I would be able to bring to the council, if you go the one method, this is how much the property tax will be. If you go the second method, but I cannot, it is really difficult to calculate at this point.
But you get, you do get those numbers in June. I didn't know.
Yeah, so it's an estimate right now. The county will tell us how that rate changes, and then we will be able to tell exactly what the revenue would come from.
I didn't think you got them till after August, so that's one of the reasons I was bringing it up.
Yeah, I wasn't so worried about the dollar amount as I was if we, whatever we adopt tonight, you say if we adopt what the current plan is, do we have to have a truth in taxation based upon that, or do we have the, the option of changing whatever our truth in taxation hearing is going to be? And at what point in time do we have to make that decision as to what the truth in taxation hearing is?
Yeah, so the process, two processes. One is the typical process, and that is we adopt a tentative budget, we hold a public hearing, and then we adopt a final budget with the numbers, the certified tax rate given to us by the county. That's the standard process where we have a budget adopted before the end of June. When there is intent to adjust the property tax rate different from what the county tells us, then the action in June is essentially a declaration of intent to change the property tax rate. And that's what triggers that process of going into August with a truth in taxation hearing. But those numbers are provided to us from the county, and then we make the decision at that point of what the actual effect will be on the tax rate, on the, on the dollars. All of that comes about a month from now.
Okay.
So that decision in June will, will be what then goes on notices and all of that information that goes out to the public prior to the truth in taxation hearing, the beginning of August, where there's state requirements for newspaper advertisement and whatnot, where it says a certain percentage change. All of those numbers are finalized at that point.
Also, in August is the point when you adopt the certified tax rate. So in August, we will have a truth in taxation, and in August, we will adopt the final tax rate, that is, whatever that is of the council. If the count, which you gave the scenario, Wayne, that if we were to hold the rate and not put the paramedic in, we will have to have a truth in taxation. If we take the, whatever the council, the county gives us initially in June and add on the paramedic rate, then we will have to have a truth in taxation in, in August, excuse me. That we will have to have those two, those are the two, both, those two scenarios would do that. The only way we would not have that thing in August is if we just take this, the tax rate and absorb the paramedic.
I, I understand that, and I appreciate. Point being is, June will be the time this council will have to decide which of those options for the truth. I believe we're going to have a truth in taxation hearing, but we can't have multiple truth and taxation hearings. We have to decide what we're going to do, and my point being is, that has to be done in June.
Agreed.
That was what I was trying to get to, so.
Yeah, so the decision to this point has been add the paramedic amount that the county's stepping out of. The question is, what rate are we adding it to? Our current rate, or the rate the county's going to give us in June?
Thank you.
All right.
And I, and I definitely don't want to, I mean, that's, that's an item I would prefer to have all of the council on board with. It made the last time a lot easier to go through, and that's, that's why I asked the question, so thank you for entertaining me.
I think it's worth considering that, and then when we have that information and we can tell you what the exact difference would be, and what that effect would be on, on property owners and all of that, then, then I think that's an appropriate time to, to have that conversation.
And just to add, I mean, this was a good discussion we had at a retreat, and this is one of the things I think that got lost in the conversation was, Mike, come back, come back, Mike, thank you. Was that we needed the numbers to be able to understand what the two are going to provide us, and we never really got that. We all, we honed in on, yes, we do want to recover the, the, the paramedic services, but we never decided to what rate. And so I appreciate Councilman Halverson bringing that back up, and I think it's appropriate that we document that we need to have that discussion at our, oh, it's May 25th meeting or our first one in June, but as soon as the numbers are ready, we need to have that discussion.
Can I ask a question? So hypothetically, let's just say that we come together in June and we get these numbers, and it's, I don't know, $150,000 more, and the council is hypothetically all in favor of that. How do we find the time to hurry and re-budget that, those extra funds? How does that work?
We would have the ability until August, when you adopt the final budget, to then.
Admin and Finance Committee would kind of probably work with that, and.
We could pick the process there. If you want to hand that off to a committee, or you want to just tackle that as, as a council, I think it makes sense to, to tell the Admin and Finance Committee, here's the numbers that we have. I expect all of the, all of the committees have a recognition of need. And to the, to Wayne's point about what would that money go toward, I think there's, there's needs across the city. And so it would just be a prioritization discussion about whether that becomes reserved, because that's been a conversation, whether or not that goes into operations.
So which committees completed their priority list, gets the first crack at it, right?
No, I, I just know we had trouble meeting our reserves.
Yes.
And I am all about reserves.
Yes.
And we did not meet our percentage in reserves, so.
Yeah. There are, there are plenty of places, I would say.
Reserves, Dave.
Well, emergency fund is always in a very important priority. I'm with you on that.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious of that process.
And, and thanks, Councilman Halverson, for bringing that up, because that is and this is a good time to have it in anticipation for what is coming in the next month or two. All right, any other comments or questions? I have one, Dave. So when we make a motion on this, you would make a motion for the resolution as well as to set the public hearing for May 25th, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, then do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-26 and set a public hearing for May 25th, 2021?
So moved.
Okay, any further comment? Then we'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. All right. Next, we move to reports. Is there any new business from the council?
I have a question. Did, did we hear back about these mics at all?
They came out, they went through all the mics. They readjust, made several readjustments. The problem that we had with the monitors, they updated the firmware on the equipment downstairs so that the monitors are working fine. They made changes to the camera so that we shouldn't have that problem. And I was disappointed that the mics went out a couple of times again tonight, because when it's being monitored, and the, and twice now, we've had them listen in on a conference, a meeting, watching the equipment remotely, and that, and it hasn't gone out. So I will get back with them again. It's the, the fading out of the mics is something that they're still trying to figure out what causes that. We haven't got it. But we did make several changes, and hopefully that that would take care of it, but I've noticed tonight it didn't solve the problem completely.
It's like when I take the car to the mechanic, and I swear it makes this noise all the time, but they never hear it, so.
Well, our mics aren't making noise in this case, so.
Exactly, yeah.
So our screens aren't on right now, is that, are we having problems, or is it?
Our screen's still working, Lisa?
No.
Screen camera's gone.
Okay. We do have, I do know how to fix that. I just to call them back, so it's.
Still some troubleshooting, it sounds like.
Yep. We will have them back.
Well, that's helpful.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I do have one item, maybe if you can do business, we have, you know, elections coming up and things like that. Is there, or has there been on the city website, a place for candidates to put their information? I mean, going through the policies a couple of weeks ago, you know, it indicates that, you know, all of our information should direct back to the city website, you know, for information that people should be trying to look for. And I know we've got lots of different places that people find information relative to candidates and whatnot. I think it might be nice, though, to at least have someplace on the city website where candidates, if they want, could put their information, so people can find it easier rather than have to go, am I dying out too? Have to go, you know, search wherever it may be.
I believe our Public Relations Chair.
I'm so happy you asked that. We had, we had the exact same discussion just last week about allowing, not allowing, about having all the information for all the candidates, not just for the city, but county, where you can go and find more information. The, the goal is to, you know, offer more than that little 125 characters that we probably all kind of had to deal with. Allow them a place where we're kind of thinking about some general questions that we will ask all candidates that they'll have the ability to answer that you will find on our website, which is underway, and if we are really lucky, it won't be up by June. I'm just kidding, there's no way. But maybe, maybe, maybe by August, we will have that up and going.
Perfect.
Unless there's a primary, and then we'll have to work faster.
If you go to the current website, under the Community tab on the menu, there's an Elections page, and it does have some information. More will be coming here shortly as we approach the first part of June when filing season is upon us. So Lisa and I have actually had that conversation here recently about what information needs to be put on that, and we'll get that information out. We'll broadcast that on the different platforms that we have to make sure candidates are aware of that. And then as, as Haley pointed out afterwards, once we do know who our candidates will be and that filing deadline is passed, we want to, we want to assist residents the best we can in, in having them connect to candidates and know who's running and, and what they're all about.
Thank you.
All right, any other new business? All right, then let's move to reports. I just wanted to thank all of you who helped with the clearing of the trail at the Dogport Park, weekend before last. And it was great to see members from the community had taken part in that, and also the YCC was there, which was great. Last weekend, I went to Harvest Dyer's Woad at the Fisherman's Access with a group of, of people, and they actually, they actually use this for respiratory illness, and it's, it's processed locally. But I believe they, that they export it to China, and I don't know how many other places, but, but it really does have a use, apparently, so. And they've used it to help with symptoms of COVID as well, so. Interesting. And then we've also got a new digital sign. I don't know if anyone has noticed that, but it is so much better, such an improvement.
Very good. I noticed it today.
From our old ones.
It's a dream come true when it comes to staff time and effort. I will say so many more opportunities with that, and. I will say so many more opportunities with that and, and ease of use that hopefully will make that a great amenity for the community.
Well, and you can actually see the screen during the day. You can see what time.
Now that both sides are lit up, that, yes.
And that is nice too. Yep.
I'm excited for the new graphics. The dancing skeletons were really fun, but I expect to see them upgraded a little bit.
We will have the opportunity or the ability now to schedule out things, right? We don't have to be there on site to put it up and take it down. And so, yeah, that means we can schedule out holiday stuff and, and all kinds of things that hopefully can be really great. Event information, you know, in the past country fair days is, you know, wish that we could put information about the events on the day that it takes place. And, and now we'll have that type of ability. I think it will be a great, a great asset as far as event information and those types of things. So they're pretty exciting.
So when Angie decides to change the Easter egg hunt and, and our city manager's out of town, we're all set.
A group decision.
Oh, it was a group decision.
It turned out fantastic.
It did.
But yes, that will be much easier.
Much more convenient. So, all right. That is all I have to report. So let's go to Councilman Haversen.
All right. The, we met as the Hiller Force Base Restoration Advisory Board on 429. And we have a new OU. The OU is labeled as OU 16. It's an on base asbestos operational unit. That will be a completely separate rod.
OU 16?
OU 16. So I don't know what I said to Angie. That's funny, but it's, you know where the rail yard is? It's on, over by the I-15. There's an army rail yard that's part of the Air Force Base. That's actually where those buildings are coming down. Those buildings are actually coming down as part of the new, there's a new on ramp, off ramp going in there.
So is it in our city limits?
No.
Oh, okay.
Not, I mean, not South Weaver, but the, the, the Rab has a new-
Right, the footprint?
The other big item that's new, the, the new rod contractor is going to be using the existing sampling wells and boring new wells with new technology. That's a rod that goes down with the probe on it will measure down to the 100 parts per billion. Instead of test, testing water, it's done with lights and lasers and all this other technology to test the soils. And I have a picture of it, but I don't think anyone really cares. But it, yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it to you, Wayne. I'll send it to you. But it actually, I think it's, it's good technology to have as they start to now start trying to refine certain measurements as they're seeing no contamination. This will test for a broader gamut of not just TFC, it'll test for all sorts of different things. So TCE, sorry. But I do think they're doing a very good job, the new rod contractor, but it is still a long process. And so it's ongoing. Any questions?
Are they using the bugs anymore then? Or they got rid of?
They are still using, they are still using bugs in where, where they're doing them currently. But they're actually now drilling these down into that to test what the soil is doing.
And are they doing that on our OU's?
They will start, they haven't started it, but they will.
They will.
They, they have asked and all citizens who have property designated in the OU's of, when asked to allow them access to do that. And I know the mayor has done some personal sites for well testing and they were very appreciative of that. And, and they, but they've asked that all of us allow access to the wells and the sites that are here so we can determine what's really here still.
They indicated a timeframe, like is this going to take 20 years to do these drilling?
So.
It all in one year?
Well, this con, this contract I believe is a 10 year contract. But, so the last rod contractor just expired and this one's just barely starting. But for the whole rod to go away, it will be 20, it, it won't be in my lifetime.
No, but just to do the sampling.
Just to do the, the sampling's ongoing. It'll, it'll just keep going through. They didn't even, they actually started on base doing it to see what type of material they would hit. Cause these do hit rocks and things. It's a little different than what the, the ones where they're testing the water and them doing the bugs. Those can take core samples out where these can't. So it is, it is a little different, but it'll, it'll go on for the next 10 years for sure.
Right. But it won't take 10 years for him to get to-
No, we'll start getting data back probably by the next Rab meeting, which is every quarter.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Haversen. Councilwoman Albers.
The PR committee met, it stated, so our biggest focus was on the website. We're in the transition phases of it's been migrated over, but there's a lot of just broken links or links that didn't carry over their data or kind of in the, have changed the way the path goes. So staff has been working on this, but it has kind of been shorthanded with the amount of other duties that they have. So Angie and I are going to go through and start checking all of those links and letting them know the company. And we have enlisted Paul to help us. We thought that he would be a great asset to have, just go through each of those links and help us be able to categorize them to kind of catch us up and get that new website up and going. So kind of, we took a note from the code committee. Wayne had a, what did he call it?
Just the project tracking spreadsheet.
The project tracking spreadsheet. We, we implemented that. We have a lot of ideas. We have a lot of different things that we talk about in, in PR, but then kind of lose our way in it. So we, we were able to create that, kind of have some projects coming up of, you know, truth, truth and taxation. High speed internet possibly coming up and just other, other really fun ideas that we want to implement. One fun thing that we decided to do was, and maybe, maybe we decided to do this, but when we finally get this new website up and going, we're going to put like a little picture of Bigfoot somewhere on the website. And we're going to tell the community, go find the Bigfoot. So they'll go through and start clicking through the links and things and they find the Bigfoot picture, they, they, they win something. I don't know what yet, but we'll, we'll, well, yeah, we'll put it, we'll put their name on the digital sign saying they're the winner.
Hey, look at that. Yeah. Dave won't even have to do it. We can delegate.
Yeah. Angie, Angie, you can't be the winner though. You don't get to play in the contest. Anyway, good stuff, good stuff. We're excited for some movement on that, so.
Did you see on the sign that it says, welcome to South Weaver and then it says, home of Sasquatch?
It did, yeah.
Yes.
Goes right along with your theme. All right. Is that it, Councilwoman?
That is it.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Soderquist.
Just once again, thank the staff for putting together the tentative budget and all the committees and everybody that's worked to, to put that together. Please continue to look through the fine details, see if there's other things that we're missing that we talked about. But come in Mac and, and all of the staff working on that. Just one follow up on the sign. Have we heard anything back from you on our second request to do a localized speed limit or speed survey?
No, not yet.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Petty.
My report is regarding the youth city council. We met as a committee and made a couple of adjustments to our application. But I just wanted to put a teaser out there that we will be having an open time period for applications, July 31st through August 18th. So if we have any youth or parents of youth who are interested, be looking for that on our website. And we are hoping to have the new members sworn in September 14th, if we get permission to do that from the mayor. So. July 31st through August 18th is the application period. And that's all I have to report.
And how many do you allow? What's the, the number of?
That's a great question. So our budget allows 11 members.
And how many do you have right now?
We have 11 members.
11 voting members.
And three advisors. So, so we're, 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 we're working with that because we want everyone to be able to vote. But we also want people to be able to participate. So working on that. I did neglect to mention though, that we are meeting, as we stated, as a parks committee. And we're excited to meet with Hogan again and kind of nail down all of our final proposals and bids from all the subcontractors on Friday.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Petty. Councilwoman Windsor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several things to, to bring up in regards to the different committees. We'll start with the municipal utilities committee. By way of communications to the public, all 56 of the new city owned streetlights have power. They did go through a little flickering issue, but I believe staff has gotten that resolved. So the next step will be, we're going to be meeting as a, as a committee this Friday. But is to establish a teamwork with Rocky Mountain Power for all future new lights to go in and how to establish a more harmonious timeframe and getting power to our streetlights. But anyway, accomplished. They actually said mid-May and they got it done a week earlier. So we appreciate the, the service Rocky Mountain Power provided. Would like to understand, I made a request several months ago with regards to an annual water report. And I've not heard any status as to where are we at with that and when can we have that report brought back to council? Does staff have a deadline that they would like to share?
That hasn't been finalized yet. No, we're, we're still gathering that. It's basically on my desk at this point. The water staff has put that together, sent it to me to kind of compile and put it into one document. And, and so it's waiting on me. I'll get that done as soon as I can.
In the future, we should be getting our reports whatever you-
Yes.
Okay, thanks. A bigger discussion. If I may, personal privilege, Mayor, elaborate a little bit.
You bet.
Okay. Whoa. There's a, the municipal utility committee has been working on the subject, I hate to use the word fiber, but broadband internet using fiber as a mechanism to bring high speed internet into the city. And I've observed and heard there's a growing frustrations in the community. This last year with the pandemic, a lot of working at home, the current systems that they have have failed them. You know, kids have to get a report in and they don't have the service, work or so forth like that. It's brought a lot of, a lot of frustrations. And the committee's been working on this and I get the sense, I mean, maybe it's self imposed that maybe we're not working fast enough or in earnest enough. And the question in my mind, I guess I'd like to canvas the council here tonight to give some direction to the municipal committee, utilities committee with regards to how fast or what priority should the committee be giving fiber optics with it comes to making a recommendation for that service in this, in the city? I don't want to get into the weeds as to what's the cost, what's, you know, those type aspects, but more of, do we think that a recommendation to move forward with some option is needed? A high priority would say in the next year or two. A medium priority would say, you know, if we had a recommendation in the next two to five years, low priority, you know, five plus years. Or maybe the council says this isn't something the city council should be worried about or city should be messing with. This is something that will just let, take care of itself. I kind of like to hear from the council in that regard as to what priority should we be spending on this so that the committee and staff can then reorganize our priorities moving forward. I don't know how you want to canvas council or if you want me to start calling them out, but I'd just like to hear from each of them, what they thought that would be.
I think you should call them out. It's really effective.
Angie, I'll start with you.
I think Angie wanted to go first.
You knew I wanted to go first.
Thank you, Angie. What's your view?
I'm happy to volunteer. I feel like it should be a high to medium, can I say it that way, two to three years? So we can kind of see what would be best.
And just to clarify in my question, this is not have it installed and ready for available. This is more of a recommendation back to the council as to what we ought to be considering doing. Now, there's a lot of steps between thou and then as to educating the community and getting additional information that we will work through as a committee. But I just kind of like to understand, okay, so two to three, three to four years is what you're saying? We need to have a decision. Okay?
All right.
Two, two to three, I'd be just knowing how long it takes to get to compile information.
Yeah. Well, push comes to shove, we could have information within six months and be able to make a recommendation that quickly if we needed to. But, okay, that's fine. Quinn?
Go down the line.
No, I don't want to go down.
I, I would be in a high category, having moved here to South Weaver when there was no TV, no anything. You had to have a big, huge antenna.
The dark ages?
Everybody else had cable and, yeah. I mean, especially with the way things are moving with pandemic and more companies are now looking at people working from home more often. I think we need a few more options. Not saying that we have to decide what, but we ought to at least put the options out to people so we can know where to go sooner than later.
Thank you.
Less than two years.
Six months.
A 1.24.
17 and three quarters.
It's a, it's a, sorry, engineering, it's a general field, you know, high, you know, get it done.
What tolerance level do you want? How many decimal points?
Are we going down the line or is when calling? I'm not sure which one was. I would give it a high priority. I have Comcast and I hate it and it doesn't work more than half the time. So I would love to see more options in six months.
Thank you, Blair.
Being part of the municipal utility company, I don't-
Oh, I'm not on, sorry. Being part of the municipal utility com, committee, I don't, I think it should be a high priority to get the information out there. I would, I mean, there's a whole nother debate whether we should pay for that option or not. But yes, I think, I don't think it's that we have 80% of that information now.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. I appreciate that. What we have before us and what would the municipal committee, utilities committee has developed. I think we will refine our information on Friday, but I, I'm going to reach out and ask. I would like to have us schedule a work session with the council so that the municipal utilities committee can bring back this information at a work session and we can have a public discussion just on this wherein we can introduce. Again, there are many ways to get broadband service from satellites to wireless to copper wire to, you know, phone lines, so forth and so on. The focus would be fiber optic being the means in which to bring a high band, high speed internet. I'd like to be able to bring all the information forward as to what are the, what are the three, there are basically three methods which to do that. And then ask, you know, some guidance for next steps. I think the committee can come forward with a few next steps. One of the concerns we have is how do we involve the public with the feedback? One, giving them the same information and how do we get them involved with the decision-making process? My biggest concern heading up this discussion is seeing how some communities have become divided over this decision. And I don't want this to be that, that division or create a division amongst this community. I want it to be a holistic, harmonious decision that everyone can understand. We do have options where some communities, you know, I'll, I'll use Morgan, Morgan City, they love it, right? They didn't have many options. They had one and that wasn't working very well. We, like Leighton and others, we have several options. The state of Utah has 98% coverage. 98% of the people in Utah can get it. Now, how reliable that is, that's, that's a whole different question. But if the mayor will allow, I think the committee would like to have a work session in as soon as possible. If we can schedule that in June, we would embrace that. But we look to you to help establish that, that time. If the council's willing to meet an extra time in the month to have that discussion. And then we can lay out the next steps after that.
What is the date for that interim Tuesday in June?
June 15th.
Is the council, is the council going to be here on June 15th?
I always want to be here.
I should be.
Okay.
Hey, if you guys have information, I want, I'm here.
I, I thank you for that. We will work towards that and we'll discuss it on Friday, but we will work to bring back a packet of information, a present on the 15th of June in hopes that they'll lead into further dialogues to next steps. And we will work under the high priority scenario to bring a formal recommendation as to next steps. Okay. Thank you for that. City code committee, we've sent a packet off. I believe every council member received the, the packet of information. We also sent to the planning commission for your review and- City code committee, we've sent a packet off. I believe every council member received the, the packet of information. We also sent to the planning commission for your review and consumption. It is a lot to digest. The planning commission is going to begin a public hearing on that information this Thursday. In, in parallel to that, the, the committee has now developed a draft of the internal accessory dwelling unit. New code based upon what the state has put into law. It's in draft form. Staff's done a great job putting the first draft together. We are going to review that next week in hopes that by the last Tuesday of this month, we'll have something to recommend to the June planning commission. Our goal would be to have something ready for adoption in the July month. We have until October first by, by this, by the law to have it in practice, but we want to have it in, we want to have a three month trial before we have to put it into, no, we're, we're looking to put it into service in July. So that's the timeframe. We're working on that. The third priority is we're going to begin. Redrafting Title Ten, Chapter Seven, conditional uses. That will be our next priority that we're going to be working on. We have eleven action items that we're tracking right now as a committee. And we have six that we're actively moving forward. These are the top three. The other, yeah, anyway, there's more to be talked about on the other items, but I think that's taken my allotment of time. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Dave?
The only other item I have to report is we, within the last two days, finally received the guidance from the Treasury Department on the A R P money. We were planning on having a discussion upcoming with the council on how to use that. Now that we have that actual guidance, I think that will inform our, our conversation. I would request from the council, time to bring that forward to all of the staff so that we can have staff provide a recommendation to the council on some of the things that, that we see as needs or, or opportunities that that money could be used. If you're okay, rather than have that discussion on the twenty fifth, if, if you allowed us to June eighth to have that discussion, I think that would give us time as staff to put forward maybe a little bit more information to inform that conversation. Is that, is that okay? I guess I'm making a specific request to put that on June eighth rather than on May twenty fifth.
I'm okay.
Last time with the CARES Act, we got the first guidance from the Treasury Department, and then there were so many questions from cities on what it meant that there were iterations for months after. We hope that they figured that out a little bit better this time, but we'll plan on being prepared for that conversation on the eighth. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Mac, did you have anything more? Michelle or Lisa?
No.
Okay, then if there's no more comment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the meeting is adjourned.